Thank you. We're recording. Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the special called meeting of B County Commissioners Court. Today is Monday, April 28th, 2025. The time is 9:00 a.m., 9:01 a.m. We're physically located at the B County Courthouse Commissioners Courtroom Number 110105 West Corpus Christi Street, Beville, Texas, 78102. That was the call to order. Would everybody please stand and join our Community Affairs Director, Bobby Jimmerson, in a brief prayer?
A great semin, Father, we thank you for all your grace and virtues. Just let your presence be felt during these proceedings through your order and lead us in Jesus' name and pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. That was excellent. Now join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now the Texas pledge, honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Agenda item number four, recognition of visitors. We have a full Commissioners Courtroom today. We're pretty near, close to it. Thank you all for being here. I believe most of y'all are here and present for specific agenda items. If you're here for public comment, that's Agenda Item Number Six, and we're only on Agenda Item Number Four. But if you'd like to identify who you are for the record, this is the opportunity that I'm going to give for you to do so. But again, if you want to say anything to us, save it for a couple more agenda items. If there's nobody that wants to identify themselves for the record, I would just say thank you all for being here. We appreciate your presence. Keep coming back. Is there anybody who'd like to identify themselves at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on. Agenda Item Number Five, Commissioners Court, opening remarks. Commissioner Olivares, you're up to bat.
Good. Thank you, Judge. Good morning. Good morning, everyone. First of all, I'd like to start out with a little recognition of Bobby Jimmerson, our new Community Affairs Director. He's been doing a great job. He's got his hands full. He's developing new work processes and cleaning up work processes, which is going to be very valuable to the county as far as how we conduct our business. So, good job, Bobby. Thank you. Appreciate what you're doing. Also, some general information. Had a meeting with the county attorney, Mike Knight. We've been working for a while to kind of obtain the status of Crowe Park, which is a park in Skidmore. Unfortunately, after a detailed review of our documents, it's still unclear who actually owns the park. So, we have a bit more work to do to identify really, does the county own it? Does the school own it? Or what do we do with it? So, a little bit more work to follow up on that. So, if anyone has any better insight than we have, please let us know. But right now, we don't know who we actually own. But we do cut the grass, so that's a plus. Also, I'd like to recognize our Road and Bridge for help mitigating some flooding situations there down in Skidmore, where they're starting to scrape some of the bar ditches and also clean up the pipe ends. And hopefully, that'll help mitigate some of the flooding that's kind of standing in these little line areas. So, hopefully, that'll help. Unfortunately, we still had, we had a constituent here that had a pretty significant complaint that I'm going to work with Road and Bridge on and how do we mitigate that. And a big driver behind that, I think he was upset that surplus dirt didn't get placed in his property, which is low. So, I'm going to talk to him about that process and how that works. Also, going to begin with Road and Bridge, received a small complaint here on Amador Room, Amira's Lane, where the individual is identified. There are some road repairs that need to be done. I'll begin with Road and Bridge to see what we can do about it. One of the key things, I'm looking for candidates within the county that there's a learning opportunity, free learning opportunity to the court, where both the Texas Workforce Group and also, believe it or not, Goodwill is offering three classes in Microsoft 365, primarily Excel, InWord, are the two areas that I'm looking at. So, I'm trying to identify some candidates that might be interested, and I'll be coordinating with that. The judge has also indicated he's got some key resources that can help us. So, it's free. It's not going to cost the county anything, and plus, it'll enhance the skill set of these individuals that are in need of learning a little bit more about Excel or Word. So, if anyone's out there, especially the team leads, please let me know so we can start putting the list together. Update on ELC. Last week, I attended our weekly update meetings, and during this meeting, there was a recommendation that we meet with San Patricio Power to identify some of the problems that we have. And it's either a power surge or lack of, that the lights are flashing. So, we met with them on Friday. We're going to be installing a SCADA system within a main unit to identify what interruptions of power that could be happening. Because it's so small, so light, I mean, it's like a nanosecond, the lights will flash, and you're not sure if it's a blink of the eye or if it's something more major. But once we get that resolved, the ELC will be good. The good thing is all of these little minor challenges that we have, and then also finalizing the punch list has not affected any of the functionality of the building or the use for training. So, that's been good. One thing I failed to mention, that SCADA system will be installed for about 24 to 30 days to assess the flow of the power to the individuals. In Skidmore, things are moving well. Again, County Road 610, we're doing some cleaning of the bar ditches. The Road and Bridge group cleaned up a bunch of brush prior to Easter, so glad that we're doing it. Good news, no complaints on mosquitoes. The spring at the County Road Bridge did its helping, and plus, I think probably the lack of rain, which is a good bad event. So, it's a good day. On the JP's office, we're going to continue working on some liner upgrades in the area of painting. We tried to leverage the use of community service personnel to perform some of these simple tasks. Unfortunately, it's just not working out. So, I'm going to get back with our maintenance manager here to develop a little bit better plan we can do to get these things fixed. I mean, we're not looking at a lot of work. We're looking at some simple painting, but thought it was going to be simple. Thought we were going to get free work, but it just didn't quite work out that way. This weekend, I attended a fundraiser for the Papalote Volunteer Fire Department. Great event, great turnout. The weather was pretty awesome. So, I was happy to attend and participate. Also, in Tynan, I attended a meet and greet that was put on by the Tynan Volunteer Fire Department, which they invited our Sheriff's Department and also DPS. Great event. Wasn't a lot of labor, glorious speeches. So, it was just amazing. Everyone could kind of meet and get to know each other. Also, I'll be working with our Tech Stop Group. We've had another complaint concerning intersection 359 and 796. This area's been unlit for many, many, many years, way before any of us, I believe, were probably on this court. The last discussion, which is about a year ago, how we texted, we're doing a study to determine what can be done in the area. And I was informed by one commissioner, which I thought he was kidding at first, but county government takes time to get stuff done. So, thank you, Commissioner DeWitt, for. So, we're still working on it. Study is being done, and hopefully, we can get that problem solved. And then in Beville, coordinating with Road and Bridge, we're trying to do some seal coating on South Gate Drive. So, still moving forward with that. It's just taking a little bit of time. So, with that, I'm going to pass it to Commissioner DeWitt.
All right. It's been a pretty busy week, even though with Easter came right in between. Had a meeting at the B Area Partnership. We have another one tonight. We have some different plans coming in to look at the hangers and things like that. So, I'll have more details on the BDA here coming up. The Tedom came by last week, and they did their final inspection on our courthouse generator. It passed. It's there. It turns on. So, we got the last boxes checked off. Excellent. So, that one, that's another project completed and done. The DA remodeling is also completed and done on the second floor of the Justice Building. And that, if you haven't gone by and seen it, that's also, the offices are really, really nice upstairs. So, there's a lot of...
There was progress.
And the carpet for Ms. Anida's office, for the district clerk, and for Ms. Cantu's offices. Ms. Cantu's office is on hold until she gets through with all of her transfer of...
We're going to be doing conversion in two weeks, so I can't have my computer with the D and just write.
Yeah. Her office is going to be pretty busy, so we're going to do Ms. Anida's first up there, and that's coming out of Judge Bowers' budget there. Okay? And then I did the State of the County for the Chamber of Commerce, and that went well. I did question and answer afterward. We had a few questions, and one of them was the sheriff's salaries for the patrol deputies. The other one was the courthouse jet and for a little cleanup on that. So, I said, well, we'll get back to that. The judge might want to personally handle that one.
And paint.
And paint. So...
I don't feel that way, Commissioner. It slows down, though, buddy.
You could say that handled it.
Well, I re-edited it back up to the judge's office anyway.
Construction manager fits the...
Pretty perfect.
Oh, yeah. That's good, isn't it? Thank you for that clarification.
We had Mr. Knight review the contract for the upcoming grant for the Texas Historic Commission for the courthouse, and it's basically saying they want permission to do a looksee and assess the problem, and gave it this check mark. So, we're going to move forward. There's an item on the agenda for that. Then we got the road, the BDA reached out, and they asked if we could get BDA to go out there and help sweep some of the runways. The city of Beville's sending two sweepers or two brooms out there and two men. And I asked Ray last week, and Ray said that he could schedule our brooms to go out there and give them a hand, too. They haven't been done in about six months, and they're in pretty dire need. So, we got to appreciate Road and Bridge doing that for that. We're waiting for the GLO pickoff for the $4.7 million grant here. It's in their court right now. We're waiting for them to schedule with us so we can get the instructions to continue on with that grant that we finally got received on. And that was two years' work. Okay? And I called Tech Stop on the feeder road, 181, on the feeder coming like all the way from Chalk Road all the way down to 59. It's pretty bad. It's scattered on it. There's holes all in it. And they said they have it on the list, but it's further down the list. So, for anybody that's listening, calling in, I just want to let you know that. Okay? And with that, Commissioner, I'll pass it to Commissioner DeWitt.
Thank you, sir. I have a few items to do.
Take all the time you need, Commissioner.
Let me tie in with Commissioner Olivares. Talking about that surplus soil when they clean out bar ditches. Years ago, this came up before Commissioners Court, and one guy said, "Well, I wanted that dirt." He got it. He's your friend. I wanted it. So, what the court did, we established a cost, $5. It costs $5. If you want that dirt, you have to pay for it, but then Road and Bridge will deliver it for you. So, there is a cost. That way, the county's covered legally. We went through the county attorney's office and all, but there's a $5 cost per load when it comes out of the water. And I noticed on the bills were, not the bills, but the Road and Bridge information, where a previous commissioner bought five loads out of this last time. So, it's there. It's worked, and you pay $15.
That's not right.
$15.
Maybe we need to...
We're going to be discussing the budget shortly. Rewind that.
Anyway, $5 a load. So, if they're working near your house or near your place, and you say, "Man, I really do like the looks of that dirt," it will cost you $5 a load. So, it's all legal. Speaking of legalities, something the court did several weeks ago, we had problems with trucks off of 181 going through West King Lane all the way to 623. So, we put up no through truck signs. We also put some off of Airport Road. Well, this morning, I get a call. DPS is writing tickets on the one on West King Lane because the trucks are going... There's a frac sand quarry about a quarter mile into the left. Well, trucks are going to that frac sand. Well, DPS has interpreted that to mean they can't do that. That's a through truck. So, we're in the process of moving those signs down past our last entrance. That way, it'll be taken care of. We're going to do the same thing on Airport Road. So, and that's fine. If that's the way it's set up, it's not a problem. So, I hope the JP comes in this morning so we can kind of let him know what's going on. That wasn't our intent, but that's the way it's been interpreted. So, we're moving those signs down past our last entrance, and we'll do the same thing on Airport Road, Commissioner.
On 301.
Yes. Okay. Attended Council Governor's Meeting last week. There's money coming in that'll be distributed to the counties in this region. Hats off to Road and Bridge. Got a lot of trees that are falling down on the county right of ways. They're out there right away picking them up. We've got a few that are beginning to fall on the state right of ways. Just keep in mind, foreign market roads and state highways are not the purview of the county. So, when you call us, we're going to say, "That's not ours. You have to get ahold of the state." So, and they're falling pretty regularly. And it's mainly the older trees, and they're not holding up. Met with some folks in Normana. A gentleman bought a piece of property that has an unused county road in it. We need to remember that when a lot of these little communities were planted in the 1880s, 1900s, there were a lot of roads. Even though we call them streets, they're actually county roads. Well, there's one, Fulton Street crosses 181 and goes to the east toward the old railroad. It's on a piece of property that this gentleman bought from his aunt. I met with them and told them the procedure we go through. The county, those roads that are not being used, they never have been developed. We're not planning on using them. And what we normally do, we have them get with the county attorney. They have to pay for the survey. If the road is completely on their property, as a general rule, it is deeded to them with a quitclaim deed or deed without warranty. It becomes their property, and justification we use, it goes back on the tax bill. We do not charge them for that property. They have to pay for all the surveying and everything else, and it comes before the court. And we've done this in Skidmore and Tynan and Tethys and all over the county, because there are county roads everywhere that never have been used. Somebody will buy a 100-acre piece of property, and they'll look on their deed, and there's a road goes through it. Well, if they're not planning on using it, it comes before the court, and we make a decision. Judge, believe it or not, that's all I have, sir.
Are you sure?
I am positive. Now, I may think of something else and come back, but right now, that's it.
Talk more about unused county roads.
Thanks for bringing that up, because I have one of those.
Well, and now, here's where it gets interesting. Folks are... Let's say the county road is half on your property and half on my property. We don't give it all to you. It's divided. That way, it's fair. Because we had quite a bit of that in Skidmore, back a little by the railroad. And it got real interesting real quick, because some of that's valuable property. And in Tynan, there are alleys that are county alleys. They're not county roads, but they're old alleyways, because way back when, they put in alleys to pick up trash. They didn't drive by the front of your house. They drove behind your house way back when. That was in Beville, too.
So, that's another big subject there, and I don't want to get into, but we do have an issue with that, because we're not sure who owns those alleys as far as cleaning them up. So, we'll talk. I'll make an agenda item and bring that up.
I better stop now, Judge.
I don't know. Thank you, and good. Commissioner, are you in?
No, Judge, no.
I know. We're going now.
That's it.
I'll keep my comments, as usual, very brief. Everybody knows I'm remiss to speak length in public, especially to a crowd that can't talk back. But no, in all sincerity, I'd like to thank Commissioner Palacios for stepping in for me and giving what, by all reports, was an excellent presentation to the Chamber of Commerce. Thank you. Really appreciate it, and great job. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Six, public comment. Now's the opportunity, if anybody that doesn't have an agenda item on the agenda but still wants to address Commissioners Court, this is your opportunity to speak. Public comment. Are there any members of the public who wish to address Commissioners Court at this time? Hearing none, we'll move on. Agenda Item Number Seven. The following items are of an administrative nature. Commissioners Court has been furnished documentation on each item, and all such items may be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by a commissioner or county judge.
Need to approve?
One second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Ms. Cantu, is there anything we need to look after?
Unless you have any questions.
I don't think so.
I didn't see that I raised any flags.
There's no further discussion. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Discuss and consider action on the following items. I am going to reorganize today's agenda items by moving Agenda Item Number 11 up in front of Agenda Item Number Eight. So, Agenda Item Number 11, approve the proclamation designating the week of April 27 through May 4, 2025, as Soil and Water Stewardship Week. I believe we have some individuals. If either there's a presentation you'd like to make, you can do it at this time. But I would first say, do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Anything you'd like to share?
Considering last week was a very big Congress mansion being the biggest environment of ours, we put that number one priority. We'd just like to give recognition that this proclamation that is soil and water conservation. And just like I said, there are many programs out there for USDA and NRC that should be implemented and help cost sharing expenses as far as concerning water and soil. So, just to let you know.
Thank you, Mr. Guyton. And would you do me the favor of introducing yourself for the record as well as the individuals that are present with you today?
I'm Arturo Guyton. I've been farming here for 39 years. I've been part of the community of six, four, and seven businesses. I'm David Davis. I'm one of our board members. I'm chairman of the NRC South Carolina District, that's 24 of them. I'm also chairman of South Texas Soil and Water Council. I've got 24 counties in the middle of the South Texas. Our district clerk, Chief Kessirk, she's the one that takes care of all our information and keeps me straight.
Well, welcome. Thank you all for being here. Ms. Kessirk, would you like, or Mr. Guyton, or Mrs. Davis, would any of y'all like to read the proclamation into the record? If so, I'd ask that you just come forward a little bit closer so that the reporter makes it up.
I cannot bring my glasses.
I've got some. Y'all can...
Everybody's volunteering glasses.
They're all of a certain age.
We are. Are you fine?
Yes, sir.
All right. Soil and Water Stewardship, we talk to the names. Whereas healthy fertile soil and clean water is a lively blood of nutrition and substance throughout the work, and soil conservation is a benefit to everyone. And whereas effective conservation practices ensure soil, water, animals, plants, air, and provide a rich standard of living. And whereas our survival and continued production and access to quality food and water depend on the robust management of diverse natural resources, nationwide. And whereas stewardship calls upon every individual to help conserve these precious resources to ensure the prosperity of generations to come. Therefore, I do hereby proclaim the week of April 27 through May 4, 25, as Texas Soil and Water Stewardship Week.
If there's no further discussion, sorry. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Can we get a photo, please? Come on up. You're standing right in front of us.
There you go.
It's a mission. Yes, sir. Yeah. We'll take care of that in two to three weeks. We are still...
Yes, ma'am, please.
Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you all. Ms. Davis.
Take care, ma'am.
Drew? Yes.
Let's get a copy.
Yep. Okay, back to our regularly scheduled agenda. Agenda Item Number Eight, update on B County Sheriff's Office for fiscal year 2024-2025, presented by Sheriff Randy J. Aguirre. Morning, Sheriff.
Randy Aguirre, B County Sheriff. Commissioners, thanks for giving me the opportunity to come up here and talk about what we've done in the first 100 days and what we hope to accomplish here in the near future. We've attached a little PowerPoint slide thing. The two patches that we came up with, those are new. We wanted to incorporate something to do with B County. The historical courthouse, we wanted to put that in there, and also the jet, you know, Chase Field was a big part of B County. So, that's our new patch. It's already on our deputies' uniforms, and the jaders will be wearing the same patch also. So, of course, it's 100 days. Really, actually, it's 118 days today that we've been working there.
Sheriff's office.
And I just wanted to talk about a few things that we have done. Of course, on the first page, that was our swearing-in day. We wanted to implement some professionalism into the department by having a uniform that all the deputies will wear while they're working. We've done that. They're starting to wear their uniform, and of course, we incorporated our hats, and that's part of, you know, the Sheriff's Department. And that's what we're trying to do, is just the professionalism for the department. The next page, the B County Sheriff's Office is committed to working with local, state, and federal agencies to keep drugs out of our communities and to protect our children. We've worked several cases already involving child predators. We worked with DPS and New Mexico State Police on identifying a suspect that was sending videos to a young lady here and to a juvenile in Beville. Our investigators worked with the agencies up there, and they got a warrant to pick up the guy. So, DPS furnished an airplane for our investigators to fly up there and bring him back. So, together, working with other agencies, we're keeping drugs off the street. That's our goal, and to protect the children in B County. So, that's one of the things that we've been working on. A lot of the cases that we work are, we don't put too much information out there because they're pending, and we don't want to give out too much information. So, the next page is, of course, as we all know, B County is having an increase in mental health, people experiencing mental health crisis. One of the campaign initiatives that I ran on while running for sheriff was to start a mental health officer... to start a mental health officer program. Jennifer Trevino is one of our deputies who is certified now as a mental health deputy, one of the first for the sheriff's office. And we're gonna, she went to a week conference in San Marcos where she got certified. There was over 400 law enforcement officers there that are mental health officers. This is a big issue in B County. This is going to help us with trying to de-escalate situations when the officers respond to something and the person is having a mental health crisis. That Jennifer can respond also and try to talk the subject down, where we don't have to use force or any kind of deadly force. So that's her goal, is to try to talk the individual down and get him help. If we need to take him to MHMR, or if we need to take him to the jail, that's what we'll do. So that's the beginning of it. We want to get several other deputies certified to do this, and hopefully that we can make an impact on the mental health crisis here in B County. And that's a picture of her at the bottom in the middle. That's Jennifer Trevino. She's one of our deputies. Also important is our jail facility. Of course, that's our biggest liability. We average about 100 inmates a day that are waiting either to go to prison or doing, carrying out their jail sentence. We also house federal inmates. I think our training is really important for the jailers. So that was one of the trainings that we did, the pepper spray certification. We implemented where some of the jailers can carry pepper spray now while they're patrolling inside the jail, just as a safety. If they have to break up a fight, if they have to get involved in the use of force, then that's just a tool that they can use to help them out. So in order to use pepper spray on the inmate or the subject, you have to go through the training, and you have to see what it's like. So you know how it affects an inmate. So this was one of our training days where a few jailers were getting certified, and we did it behind the jail. We have a certified trainer that administers the pepper spray, so they get the effects of how it works. So that was part of the training. Captain Bailey, our jail administrator that y'all met, she's big into the training. She worked for the Jail Commission in Austin, so she brings a lot of knowledge to the jail. She knows a lot, and it's really helped me and the chief handle other things where she can take care of the jail stuff. The next page is also training. It's a big thing. Like I said, I went to a week-long school for jail administration, management, and operation. It was for newly-elected sheriffs. So that's a photo of all the sheriffs that were there, and we went through the training of what is expected in the jail. Again, they stress the liability of the jail. If you're going to get sued, that's a place that you're going to get in trouble. Inmates' rights and all that stuff. So it was a good training. We made a lot of good contacts. If we need anything, we know that we can reach out to all these individuals for help or advice. So that was a big thing. We continue to focus on training with the deputies, the jailers, or administrators, whatever we can help with. The next photo is applying and securing grants. Of course, that's a big thing that the chief and I have focused on. It relieves the burden of our budget. It helps with buying equipment and training. Recently, with coordinating with DPS, the B County Sheriff's Office secured over $25,000 of equipment to directly support patrol operations, tactical readiness, and overall officer safety. Being that, you know, retiring from DPS, I had a lot of contacts that I reached out to and just asking for used equipment, you know. For us, it's new stuff. For them, it's used, but it's not that used. So we're able to use that. So we went up there with a trailer. The chief and another investigator went up there and picked up a trailer full of equipment, anything from storage boxes that go in the topos for their rifles and equipment, to gun locks, to cameras, radars. So they were able to provide us with all that at no cost to us. We just had to send them an email requesting the equipment. So that was a big help. We're also currently, are here not too long ago, we received a grant from the Rochelle Foundation in Corpus for $48,000, which that helped us buy, we're in the process of ordering some body cameras and some new computers. So that's helping with that. We also, we're working with the Auditor's Office. Ms. Jennifer Russell and her working, the chief, working close together on trying to secure additional grants. Conical Phillips has offered for us to complete a grant and submit it to them. We're in the process of working on that right now. Operation Lone Star, we've applied for about $800,000 worth of equipment. We may not get all that, but even if we get half of that, that's going to go a long ways. For additional cars, computers, we want to put a K-9. We need a K-9 for our department. And a K-9 handler, maybe a narcotics investigator, things of that nature that would help us fund that. Also, the Senate Bill 22 has helped with, you know, buying equipment and all that. Hopefully, that won't go away. We just can't depend on it. One of the Conical Phillips grants that we're working on is the, the next photo is the Mini Shield, it's called. The portable Mini Shield is designed to enhance officer protection during high-risk operations, vehicle approaches, warrant service, and active threat situations. They provide critical cover against handgun and rifle fire while allowing for increased mobility and tactical maneuverability in confined spaces. So as you can see in that photo, that's a Mini Shield. It's a new thing that's come out here in the last couple of years. It's for the officer, if he has to approach a vehicle or go into a school for an active shooter, that he can take this from behind his car and carry it with him. So they have small, medium, and large. They all depend on the weight. I think the medium's about 14 pounds, and you're going to carry that, you know, almost like a crime fighter shield, you know. You're going to carry it with you, and it provides protection to the officer. I think it gives him a little more confidence in going in there that he knows that at least he's protected, protecting his vital organs, and not to mention, you know, the body armor that they wear also. So that's what we're shooting for, to get that with the Conical Phillips Grant. The next page is B County Sheriff's Office Overtime Comparison. We did some research on it, and as you can see in the first slide, this is previous administration from 2024, the first six pay periods from January to April, overtime hours. So as you can see in the yellow, it's 2,568 hours of overtime that they accumulated for those six pay periods. Our first six pay periods, we've reduced that to 1,235 hours of overtime. So, you know, about half of the overtime. And then on the bottom slide, it's the last six months of the previous administration overtime, and that's overtime hours. So it varies. A sergeant get paid, a sergeant gets paid different than a jailer in overtime time and a half. So in 2024, the total cost of overtime that was paid out was approximately $226,000 in overtime, and we're looking at reducing that by more than half. So that's just money that's not budgeted, you know. It comes from the general budget, so if we can reduce that, that's a big help to the county. That's our goal. We're just trying to be good stewards of our budget, trying to reduce overtime. If we don't need it, of course, if you need it, then, you know, we'll use it. But that's what we're trying to cut back on. As you can see on there also, the, we did some research on the revenue collected in 2024 that goes back to our general budget was $530,000, and that's from impound fees, from housing federal inmates, from housing out-of-county inmates, the phone calls that the inmates make. We get part of that revenue that goes back to the general budget. So we're doing our best, too, to try to provide funds that go back to the budget also, because we're always asking for something. So we continue to work on that. The next page, what we wanted to do was just to kind of bring a new face to the sheriff's office with the uniforms and also with the vehicles. So we were hoping that they was going to be the first vehicle that was going to be decal. Of course, they call and say that they have vehicle trouble and they can't make it. So that's not till tomorrow on the week. So that's going to be our new vehicle. That's what it's going to look like, the striping, the yellow or gold sheriff with our patch on it, and it's just going to bring you a different look. So we're having about 16, 17 vehicles re-decale, and, you know, of course, we'll purchase that with our SB 22 money kind of helped out on some of that. We also have one vehicle that we're going to do ghost lettering. Y'all seen those around with different departments where you can't see the lettering unless the light hits it. We're having one of those vehicles done like that. We're hoping that with the OLS grant, that we're going to be able to get a K-9 unit. So hopefully, we can use that vehicle as our K-9 narcotics unit. So we're hoping that that'll pan out. The next page is a, it's called a step-in repeat banner that we ordered. We're going to use it for a recruiting tool where you can take it to the schools, and you can set it up behind your table. It's an eight by 10, and the kids can take pictures with it. We can do promotional pictures with it. So that's going to be in our lobby of the sheriff's office. The next page is just a snapshot of different photos from different promotions, from recognizing the dispatchers on Dispatcher Week, to attending the recruiting at the high school, to promotions in the jail. Also in there are the, are two great bailiffs that work here at the courthouse, Andy and Tanya. They saw a need for a metal detector. Theirs had, it was old and not working, so they requested a metal detector, and we came up with the funds to provide that, and it's being used already at the courthouse. It provides safety for the employees, visitors, or judges, or commissioners. So, you know, they're using it wisely, and I think it's a, it's a good thing with the bomb threat and all that that was going on, too. So they can identify if anybody's bringing in any type of metal objects into a courtroom, or even just to the building itself. We have a good relationship with Dalemore College. They provide the training to certify our jailers at no cost to us. All that we have to provide is just the facility to do it, and we have a perfect conference room. We're going to do a 40-hour school. So different people come, Libo County, Goliad, San Pat, they all get together and they do the training at no cost to us. They pay a fee for the class, but we don't have to. So in short, this is what we're trying to do. You know, we're just trying to be transparent and just kind of keep you on the loop on what we've done so far and what we're working on. So I appreciate y'all's time.
Thank you, Sheriff. Don't go anywhere. Are there any questions?
Good job.
Really good job.
Thank you.
I do have a comment.
Yes, sir.
Number one, thank you very much for keeping our entire community safe. Seeing the new facelift is pretty great to see.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Appreciate you showing all the professionalism. The area around mental health, I think, is huge. I think a lot more than I realize how bad it is. And what y'all have to deal with on a day-to-day basis is unbelievable. So my flaw in all the officers that are dealing with that on a day-to-day basis, you just don't know what you're going to run up against. So thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate y'all's time.
Thank you, Sheriff. Do we know where the last, we had a dog and we sold it. Did we sell it or didn't?
We didn't.
We sold it.
We didn't.
I believe it was Libo County. I like the comp time overtime.
Yeah.
That is incredible for us.
That's probably the biggest thing.
Yes. Thank you again, Sheriff. We were just discussing the, we've been through the, you know, the drug interdiction dog situation before, and ultimately, I was wondering where the last one was. I think we sold it.
Yes.
I'm sure it was at 20, maybe it was in 23. So that'd be great.
Yeah.
I guess officer retention is the key issue there. All right. If there's no further questions or discussion, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Nine, Approve Expo Request for Auditorium Fee Waiver from the Boys and Girls Club of Beeville for their annual Casino Night on Saturday, May 17th, 2025. Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Longstanding, incredibly important organization to the youth of our community. You know, I grew up going there, and I think most kids did at some point in time get a positive impact out of the Boys Club. And thank you so much for everything that you do. Is there anything you'd like to present?
No, just once again, to thank y'all for the opportunity to have this. Any chance that we can have to reduce the costs associated with the event, lead to us having greater success income-wise and being able to divert that towards our operating and programming needs. So just, as always, greatly appreciated. Thank y'all for seeing the utility in what we do and for wanting to assist in this way. It helps us out in breaking.
Well, we can't tell you how much we appreciate everything you guys do, and what y'all do helps out our community much more than the small amount of money that we're waiving so that you can hold this event. And if you're interested in supporting the Boys Club, please show up on May 17th, 2025 with all of your available funds and spend them.
Exactly.
And you might identify yourself for the.
I'm John Corkill. I'm the executive director for the Boys and Girls Club of Beeville.
Do you have anybody else here today on your behalf?
I have, one of my board members here is Reagan Florence. We actually didn't coordinate this, so when I showed up, he was here, and so there we are. But like I said, we appreciate everything that the community does. One of the biggest things that we always stress is the fact that grants and foundations and corporations, they want to see that your community supports you. If your community's not supporting you, then why should they support you? And so events like this, we're able to reflect to those funders that, hey, you know, we go into our community, they support what we're doing, and if they want to be a part of it, hopefully, these are their entities that want to be a part of it.
Thank you, Mr. Corkill.
Sure.
Any further discussion? Any other questions? Any other comments? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Mr. Corkill.
Thanks, sir.
Agenda Item Number Ten, Approve Participating Entity Services Agreement Between Sillogist Gov Inc. and B County for the statewide automated victim notification service, SAVENS. Do we have a presentation? Any discussion? Do I have a motion?
Maybe if y'all make a motion, it'd be approved. A second, we have, or come give us some information.
I'll second.
I have a motion in a second. Ms. Segovia, would you like to talk to us about SAVENS program?
Good morning. This SAVENS program is the same program that we've been using all these years for victim notification services. This is just a different software that we're going to be using this year instead of the Appress that we used to use for Vine, the Vine Link. This is a new program that the state is bringing to all the state of Texas, and so we're one of the lucky ones that's going to start using it. And it's supposed to be something easier, more victim-friendly. They'll be able to get more services automatically to their disposal instead of having to come through me to get that information, which hopefully will work to our advantage. I'm hoping it's going to be a success for our county. I haven't used it. It's brand new, so I'm hoping it's going to, it's going to generate good services.
Thank you, Ms. Segovia. Any questions for Ms. Segovia? All right. This doesn't have a set amount.
To me, it's a wash. I haven't had any other.
The SAVENS grant is allocated back to the county after we are billed from, well, it used to be Appress, now it will be Sillogist. So we get the bill from Sillogist, we pay, and then we get that revenue back from SAVENS.
To all other present department heads and elected officials, anytime you want to bring something to Commissioners' Court that's fully funded this way, we are, we are not going to give you too hard of a time. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen, and thank you, Ms. Segovia. For those of y'all that don't know, don't, may not know, Ms. Segovia is our Crime Victims Coordinator. She's out of the B County Attorney's Office. She's been doing this for 15, 20 years?
Over 24 years this year.
24 years. It's a wonderful, little-known component of certain crimes in our community. We appreciate everything that you do for all our victims. So thank you, man. Keep up the good work. Moving on, Agenda Item Number Twelve, Approve the Award of Request for Proposals, RFP Number 24/25-006 Bank Depository Bid. Who do I turn this over to? Madam Auditor?
This is mine. This is mine. And so you'll see, what I've submitted is a recommendation, and then, of course, the four banks that bid, there are some that are present, which I appreciate you taking your time and being here with us today. These bids were great. They take a lot of time to submit, and we appreciate the efforts in doing them. But we did recommend, we are recommending Simmons. There is no change. There's no change. It's going to be the same services and rates that we've been seeing, and so that is, of course, our recommendation to the Commissioner's Court. Y'all have any questions?
The one thing I would like to say, though, that, that looking over the paperwork and all, it was a competitive process with a lot of review.
For sure.
And it wasn't just one person who reviewed it, so I appreciate all the banks and the information you put together. It was not easy putting all, all that together and filling in all those blanks, so it was not an easy choice, I'm sure.
It is not an easy choice. No, it is not. It's a lot of work that comes into it, and I just appreciate the work that the banks bring to, to compete in this process. And it's a, five, every five years that we, by statute, that we have to go through this, so I appreciate the competitiveness.
So it is statutory, and.
Yes.
We appreciate the local banks and all the, you guys work with us every chance you get, and we do appreciate it. We really do.
Yes, thank you.
I'll make a motion if, if we follow your recommendation to Simmons Bank.
Yes, thank you.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? I will note that with the exception of one of the four entities, the total reviewed valuations that were given on the, on the, the three local banks were close.
Yes.
Very close.
They were close.
Yes.
And I echo Ms. Cantu's comments. Thank y'all for the participation, and come back in five years.
Yes.
I don't know what else to say. Not the best pill to get, you know? So I hate giving bad news to folks that are in, in the audience. Hell, I hate giving bad news anytime, but, but I, I do want to thank y'all sincerely for your efforts, repeated efforts in this regard. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without approval. Congratulations to Simmons Bank.
What's that? No, I don't know. What did I say?
Without approval.
I said without approval?
Yes.
In what context?
I don't know.
Thank you, Reagan.
Thank you.
Whatever I said scratched that. I'd like to say without exception.
Thank you.
There we go.
I don't know what I said. I thought, I was just trying to thank Simmons Bank.
You really did.
Yeah, or congratulate Simmons Bank.
Yeah, thank you.
And anyway, I can't, I, I don't have veto rights, so I did not veto the vote of this August board. Trying to throw a new word in there for y'all. Moving on, agenda item number 13, we've got lots of time, folks. We're going to be here. We're not ending this meeting till noon.
I haven't hit you go back.
Yeah, of course.
I know. We have jobs to do.
So I guess, Madam Monitor, you know, the numbers are very close, very competitive, working with the local banks. Wherever there was a shortfall, did we let those individuals know where they can improve at next time?
Um, I, if they reach out, I definitely can.
And it's all public now.
Yes, and, and the vendors do. If they have questions, they can reach out to me. They have my email address and my phone number, and I am available for any questions.
Can the property improve the process?
Sorry, very close.
Yes, I know.
It's very transparent because the package's out on the website, so we're familiar with the school card, and so we'll, we'll be ready next time.
Thank you so much.
Good. Okay. Anything else?
No.
Because we still got a lot of time to go. Ms. Cantu told me before this meeting, she sent me a text message, and she said, Judge, you know, Commissioner's Courts are the highlight every other week for myself, and if there's any way that we can just make it last a little bit longer.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, I, I do.
And you know me, I always want to accommodate whatever I can do. Captain people, yeah, why don't you start? Do the first 30 pages and then I'll.
pathways I'm more interested in.
We'll reopen agenda item number five. Okay, moving on, agenda item number 13, approved standard agreement between B County and Kumatsu Architecture for the Courthouse Conditions Assessment. Commissioner Farias, I believe, is this going to be your item?
Yes, sir, it is. Jenny and I have been working on this, and this is the next step to the courthouse restoration grant, and it's basically they're asking permission to come in to our building, take a look, so they can assess all the, from top to bottom, from the basement all the way to the dome, and the statue, and the handle, the torch, everything else. And we, we need to approve this before they can come into this building and, and do their assessment. And they can break it down. It's only if it gets too big, they need to break it down in bite-sized sections, you know, so we can do this in phases. So they, with that understanding, this is, this work. I'm asking y'all to accept their contract. Mr. Knight has reviewed it. He said, check, check all the boxes.
And this is for, this is a architectural.
Yes.
Firm who might be conducting the architecture.
Yes, and they will.
Drawings.
Yes, they, they will do the drawings. They will also do the assessment and the need, the needs assessment.
Okay.
And they're going to triage it. Okay, what do you need first? What's happening? The walls are falling apart, you know, and everything that we do.
The conditions assessment of the entire building, so from the basement all the way to the top, every condition that we need to look at, they're going to document and give us the results of that assessment.
And this is just an assessment?
Assessment.
This isn't a contract for services?
Correct.
Great. So I don't have a problem with that when it comes to the contract, and I really appreciate y'all getting it to Mr. Knight and him reviewing it, but too much time has not passed. I do remember the B County Jail construction, and I remember one of the issues that we had when we were done with the B County Jail, well, when they were done with the B County Jail, and we had a non-operating building. One of the big issues that was identified by Mr. Allison were certain terms contained in the architectural contract. So just food for thought. I think, I think retaining Mr. Allison's firm or another firm that practices commercial construction is incredibly complicated, and it is not necessarily fair to the person who's receiving the building or the improvement or whatnot. I really think we ought to seriously consider that as a, as a prudent expenditure of, of funds prior to executing it, because I remember distinctly in that AI contract.
Yes, sir.
That Mr. Allison and his partners was like, oh, yeah, this is a fra, this is a clause that you probably shouldn't have included.
There'll be another contract.
Review this before we.
No, 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 not this. This I'm okay with. This is just, I'm just throwing it out there so you don't forget. So I don't forget about it.
The next one.
Y'all will remember it so that I can't forget about it.
There you go.
And what's great about this one is that we are the fourth grant versus some of the other grants where we've had, it's kind of like we have to make a decision like based on.
Right.
This is one of the ones that's unique that we are a little bit in the fourth grant. The grant's not until next year, so if we do all these, crossing the T and starting the I's at a time, it will be a little better.
I just love this, and, and I got to say, before I take a vote, because we've got all the time in the world, no, seriously, I, I have to say that the, the fact that Ms. Raina, Commissioner Farias, took this up and have started this process, it is a very cumbersome, long, detailed, difficult process, and I, I can't tell you how much I appreciate y'all taking the ball and running with it, so I look forward to seeing the next courthouse, yeah, get renovated. And for those of you that don't know, and the crowd has shrunk, so much so that you probably all do know, I'm preaching to the choir, but many, many moons ago, B County accepted renovation funds from the Texas State Historical Commission, which resulted in a historical conservation easement being placed over this building. B County can't just make a repair in many respects with respect to the facade, or the way the building looks, or the color, the fact that the walls are sloughing off when there's excess moisture or humidity issues. We have to go through this very detailed, otherwise cumbersome project or process, and I just really, really want to paint a large exclamation point on my appreciation for y'all for going through this, and we're going to get that torch back up in Lady Justice's hands, so I can't wait for that day. I won't be here, and maybe I'll come back and take a photo of y'all standing in front of it on a crane. We can, and we can spitball other ideas. Any further discussion? No?
I did, I did get an opportunity to review the document, and I had, did have some dialogue here with our county attorney. I think that the, the nature of this document from a draft standpoint, I want to quote it, draft, is, is probably good to go. There was an enormous amount of TBAs that I would like to have some, or I think the court would like to have some better clarity exactly what those mean, from account compensation to how the project gets executed. Got a lot of questions around it. I, I would, you know, similar kind of bouncing off where the judge was sitting, I think it would be good to have several of our stakeholders have a review, contract review meeting to discuss some of these questions that I have identified here within the contract. Framework is good, but I think before we actually make an agreement between the county, I think it'd be a good idea just to, one more time.
Run it by Allison Ness. Can you get it two weeks? Is two weeks enough? When's our next Commissioner's Court meeting?
May 14. May 12. Maybe it's May 12.
May 12 or May 14?
Oh, 12. May 12.
May 12. Okay. Commissioner Olivas, is that a motion to table, agenda item number 13, until the May, I can't remember, 12, 2025? Commissioner's Court?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to, to table till we can meet with TAC and get some guidance as far as the actual.
We'll have two weeks.
Would it be TAC or?
It would be TAC or Allison.
It'd be Allison.
It'd be Eric McGee or Rick Thompson, because Jim Allison is not.
Right, but, but I mean, his firm, that firm.
He's reentering that.
Yeah, there, there's just some gaps that identify that have a lot of questions about.
Eric, Eric, very good.
And, and to, of course, whatever expense it might be to it. Correct. Yeah, I have no idea what, what they charge, but it would be well worth it.
Yeah, I think we have a lot of flexibility, and we can.
It would be to our, to our benefit, because we have, I mean, we're, we're seeing that with the EOC, and I know that's what Commissioner's talking about, because if we would have done, you know, with, with the engineering contract for, for that building, we wouldn't have a lot of these issues that we're having currently as well as the building.
Good point. Thank you.
Yeah.
You know, there's a lot of cross-through, there's a lot of items that in progress have been deleted. I'm just kind of curious what was deleted, so.
Just another reason we have such great value of having retired senior contracts, execution, management, construction expert, Commissioner Olivas and so forth.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I know Ms. Raina, Commissioner Farias, will welcome.
No, that's, that's fine. All the, all the assistance that they can get.
Yeah, that's wonderful. I have a motion to have a second to table. So I need a second. I'll take one. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. If an issue comes up, and on May 12, we're still not ready, we can table it again, but certainly we want to keep this ball moving forward while we have some steam, so thank you all for that. Did I take a vote?
Yes.
Oh, good. It's been a long day. All right. We have no executive session items. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn?